Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. The committee has set aside this time for public comment. Kelly, do you have a public comment?
We do, Diane Arnold.
Okay. Individuals addressing the board shall have one opportunity to speak during public comment and shall be limited to three minutes each. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system. We strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including the complaint process, are outlined in Board Practice, Board Policy 2504.
Good morning, my name is Diane Arnold and I did write a letter to the school board in this regard about TAG. So I will try to keep my comments really brief. We have three children, our oldest is in fifth grade in the TAG program and we love it for her, it's been wonderful. And our other two children go to Eastern Elementary School. TAG right now, obviously, it's a longstanding program, it's been around for many, many years and we have this amazing opportunity to really make it even better and help more children, which I think is the goal for this. I think one way to do that is to make it more accessible. And I don't mean that we, you know, open the doors to everyone, I think that's what makes TAG important, is that it is limited to those children who've taken the test and entered the program the way it's normally done. I maybe need more children to take the test. I think that lots of children don't take the test because it's not inclusive. We do not allow busing for children, it's very difficult for parents, especially working parents who have children in other schools. And many children simply don't want to leave their home school, it's very difficult. And frankly, I think school's discouraging. I don't think that it's something that schools necessarily want to do, to let all their best and brightest leave their school. So if there was a way to make it, maybe instead of an opt-in, an opt-out. I have friends and other parents that I know, very smart, great people, who didn't even know about the TAG test. So they missed it. So I know that's my three minutes, thank you so much, and, oh, is that not it?
No.
Oh.
Another minute and fifteen.
No, you're good.
You got another minute and fifteen seconds.
But yeah, so basically, just to make it so that we get the most children possible into the program that should be in the program. I know that my younger children, third and first grade, they are pulled out of their classroom to do higher level. And it really comes down to equity, there should be equity for all children, including those children that are advanced learners. And so I know that I've already sent an email, so you can definitely refer back to that. Feel free to give me a call if you have any questions. And I know people that chose not to send their children to TAG this year because of the uncertainty. So I think the sooner we get some certainty for where our children will be, how we can plan for that, I think the better for our community. And this is our opportunity and I really thank you guys for all you do.
Thank you.
Thanks. And then we're gonna go to school.
Good call.
Thank you.
Bye guys, have a good day.
You too.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
That's the end.
Okay, great. So we're gonna move on to the procedural items. And first up are the draft committee meeting minutes from August 25th, 2025. Fellow trustees, any suggestions, changes, additions, leations? Okay. I did catch one thing and I apologize, by the way, to you in particular, for not flagging this sooner. Under the informational items for the district assessment schedule, 5A, we just have a blanket statement that we went over the Michigan Department of Education requirements for testing, but the administration also shared a decision to drop some testing, specifically the K-5 NWEA reading in winter, the sixth and seventh grade NWEA spring, eighth grade NWEA altogether, to reduce testing fatigue and also, you know, the imposition on instructional days. So I just would like to reflect that somehow, as I think this is kind of a conference for people, hey, when did the district decide to do that? If you want to pull that up to a higher level summary, you know, that there were some changes, K-8, I'm fine with that, or you could be specific, as I just was. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Moving on, we have the district course catalog, Ms. Houghton.
Yes, lots of courses that you see here, a couple things to keep in mind. The MVHS is our Michigan Virtual High School courses, so those are courses that students this year are interested in taking that have not taken in the past, or potentially new courses being offered through Michigan Virtual that students were interested in, so we're adding those. The ACL is our Acelis courses, so keep in mind we've got our virtual programming running up at the middle school. How about 15 students right now, full-time in that? We anticipate for that enrollment to grow, but those are all of our Acelis courses. NMC acronyms, I think you are all familiar with those. Again, these could be shared-time students or students who currently attend one of our high schools, who NMC is either offering these courses and have not offered in the past, or a student is interested in adding them to their schedule and they do meet our requirements for dual enrollment courses. The most interesting one on here is the history of rock. So our teachers at both of our high schools are able to propose a new course. We have a process in which the teachers in the department brainstorm. Typically, we're looking for a gap in the curriculum or a gap in potentially something students are interested in that we don't offer right now. And we have a social studies teacher who is at Central High School who proposed this course. It would be an elective course in the social studies department, an interesting course, and so it will not run unless we know we have enrollment. But we are asking to put this on our course selection sheet for next year, for our students to potentially choose that as a one semester history elective. We do share that with our counterparts at West Senior High, they reviewed it, unsure if they will pick it up as well, but that's kind of how our new courses at our sites roll.
So that is actually a geology class?
That's what I was saying.
No. It's correct.
Okay, okay.
History of Rock and Roll.
You're taking.
It is a lot of social studies.
Well, then she said science, I'm like, okay, I guess it's our social studies.
Social studies.
Okay, got it.
But the thing that concerns me, history of rock is very American, very, very kind of inclusive.
British rock.
There's a lot.
Lot of British. Rolling Stones, come on!
I don't think so.
Come on!
It's like psychedelic furs.
Queen.
Day posh. Queen, okay, I'll give you a queen.
I can see you guys have a lot of input to the course syllabus, I will be sure to.
I always listen to the Rolling Stones.
So can we just make it Rock and Roll so it's quite clear, it's not geology class?
The kid who will take it will know what that means.
There is, will be a course description, is under the social studies department courses, but I can take it back to him and ask him if they want to change the name. That's what.
Those old records on the shelf.
Well, I think you should have blues and country in there too, in time.
That's great.
Yeah, that will be interesting, because there is kind of that thought of rock is not necessarily Rock and Roll. Like, the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame has actually, it's actually debated the genre. And rock is considered a much narrower group, so they may stick to their guns on that, just be prepared. I don't know why I know. It's like, yeah, it's like a Jeopardy question, you know? No idea why I know it, but I know.
I actually once interned at Rolling Stone magazine, but I am definitely now a middle-aged mom who is not up to speed on it. So.
Fair enough.
All right. I just had a question about the AP Calc, Calculus AB, through Michigan Virtual. Because I know, I mean, our, don't our high schools also offer Calculus AB, or is it just BC now?
They offer both in person, AB, remember, is the one that gives the equivalent of the Calc 1, the BC is the one that gives the equivalent of the Calc 1 and Calc 2. But remember, they're not offered every hour. Typically, we have one or two sections at each high school. So if we have a student who really wants to take it, but it's a conflict with yearbook.
Career tech.
Career tech, jazz band. I mean, like, we have a lot of singletons that are students who are advanced, we call singletons a course.
This meeting of the Board for curriculum committee to order. The committee would like to welcome the audience and viewers. They watch live board committee meetings online at TCAPS.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. The committee has set aside this time for public comment. Kelly, do you have a public comment?
We do. Diane Arnold.
Okay. Individuals addressing the board shall have one opportunity to speak during public comment and shall be limited to three minutes each. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system. We strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including the complaint process, are outlined in Board Policy 2504.
Good morning. My name is Diane Arnold. And I did write a letter to the school board in this regard about TAG. So I will try to keep my comments really brief. We have three children. Our oldest is in fifth grade in the TAG program. And we love it for her. It's been wonderful. And our other two children go to Eastern Elementary School. TAG right now, obviously, it's a longstanding program. It's been around for many, many years. And we have this amazing opportunity to really make it even better and help more children, which I think is the goal for this. I think one way to do that is to make it more accessible. And I don't mean that we, you know, open the doors to everyone. I think that's what makes TAG important, is that it is limited to those children who've taken the test and entered the program the way it's normally done. I maybe need more children to take the test. I think that lots of children don't take the test because it's not inclusive. We do not allow busing for children. It's very difficult for parents, especially working parents who have children in other schools. And many children simply don't want to leave their home school. It's very difficult. And frankly, I think school's discouraging. I don't think that it's something that schools necessarily want to do to let all their best and brightest leave their school. So if there was a way to make it, maybe instead of an opt-in, an opt-out. I have friends and other parents that I know, very smart, great people, who didn't even know about the TAG test. So they missed it. So I know that's my three minutes. Thank you so much. And, oh, is that not it?
No.
Oh.
You're good. Sorry.
Another minute and fifteen.
No, you're good.
You got another minute.
Minute and fifteen seconds.
But yeah, so basically just to make it so that we get the most children possible into the program that should be in the program. I know that my younger children, third and first grade, they are pulled out of their classroom to do higher level. And it really comes down to equity. There should be equity for all children, including those children that are advanced learners. And so I know that I've already sent an email, so you can definitely refer back to that. Feel free to give me a call if you have any questions. And I know people that chose not to send their children to TAG this year because of the uncertainty. So I think the sooner we get some certainty for where our children will be, how we can plan for that, I think the better for our community. So, and this is our opportunity, and I really thank you guys for all you do.
Thank you.
Thanks. And then we're gonna go to school.
Good call.
Thank you.
Bye, guys. Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
That's the end.
Okay, great. So we're gonna move on to the procedural items. And first up are the draft committee meeting minutes from August 25th, 2025. Fellow trustees, any suggestions, changes, additions, leations? Okay. I did catch one thing, and I apologize, by the way, to you in particular for not flagging this sooner. Under the informational items for the district assessment schedule, 5A, we just have a blanket statement that we went over the Michigan Department of Education requirements for testing. But the administration also shared a decision to drop some testing, specifically the K through five NWEA reading in winter, the sixth and seventh grade NWEA spring, eighth grade NWEA altogether, to reduce testing fatigue and also, you know, the imposition on instructional days. So I just would like to reflect that somehow, as I think this is a kind of conference for people. Hey, when did the district decide to do that? If you want to pull that up to a higher level summary, you know, that there were some changes, K through eight, I'm fine with that, or you could be specific, as I just was. Thank you. All right, moving on, we have the district course catalog. Ms. Houghton.
Yes, lots of courses that you see here. A couple things to keep in mind. The MVHS is our Michigan Virtual High School Courses. So those are courses that students this year are interested in taking that have not taken in the past, or potentially new courses being offered through Michigan Virtual that students were interested in. So we're adding those. The ACL is our ASALIS courses. So keep in mind, we've got our virtual programming running up at the middle school. How about 15 students right now, full-time in that? We anticipate for that enrollment to grow, but those are all of our ASALIS courses. NMC acronyms, I think you are all familiar with those. Again, these could be shared-time students or students who currently attend one of our high schools who NMC is either offering these courses and have not offered in the past, or a student is interested in adding them to their schedule and they do meet our requirements for dual enrollment courses. The most interesting one on here is the History of Rock. So our teachers at both of our high schools are able to propose a new course. We have a process in which the teachers in the department brainstorm. Typically, we're looking for a gap in the curriculum or a gap in, potentially something students are interested in that we don't offer right now. And we have a social studies teacher who is at Central High School who proposed this course. It would be an elective course in the social studies department, an interesting course. And so it will not run unless we know we have enrollment. But we are asking to put this on our course selection sheet for next year for our students to potentially choose that as a one-semester history elective. We do share that with our counterparts at West Senior High. They reviewed it, unsure if they will pick it up as well. But that's kind of how our new courses at our sites roll.
So that is actually a geology class, the History of Rock.
No.
Rock and Roll.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
History of Rock and Roll.
You said, you're taking. I was gonna do a tie-hat shake, but I think you were missing.
Well, then when she said science, I'm like, okay. I guess it's our social studies.
Social studies.
Okay, got it.
But the thing that concerns me, History of Rock is very American, very, very kind of inclusive.
It's British rock.
There's a lot.
Lot of British. Rolling Stones, come on.
I don't think so.
That's true.
Come on.
To try.
It's like psychedelic furs.
Queen.
Queen, okay.
I can see you guys have a lot of input to the course syllabus. I will be sure to.
I'll listen to the Rolling Stones.
So can we just make it Rock and Roll, so it's quite clear? It's not geology class?
The kid who will take it will know what that means.
There is, will be a course description. It's under the social studies department courses. But I can take it back to him and ask him if they want to change the name. That's what it is.
Those old records on the shelf.
Well, I think you should have blues and country in there, too, in time.
That's great.
Yeah, that will be interesting, because there is kind of that thought of rock is not necessarily rock and roll. Like, the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame has actually, it's actually debated the genre. And rock is considered a much narrower group. So they may stick to their guns on that. Just be prepared.
Okay.
I don't know why I know. It's like, yeah, it's like a Jeopardy question, you know? No idea why I know it, but I know.
I actually once interned at Rolling Stone magazine, but I am definitely now a middle-aged mom who is not up to speed on.
Fair enough.
So, all right. I just had a question about the AP Calc, Calculus AB through Michigan Virtual. Because I know, I mean, our, don't our high schools also offer Calculus AB, or is it just BC now?
They offer both in-person. AB, remember, is the one that gives the equivalent of the Calc I. The BC is the one that gives the equivalent of the Calc I and Calc II. But remember, they're not offered every hour. Typically, we have one or two sections at each high school. So if we have a student who really wants to take it, but it's a conflict with yearbook, career tech, jazz band. I mean, like, we have a lot of singletons that are students who are advanced. We call singletons a course that runs one hour a day. And they're just our conflicts, right? We schedule based on what's the least amount of conflicts is what our software uses, but that doesn't mean zero conflicts, right?
All right, so it sounds like this is a response to more demand than there were, there was supply of teachers. But I just wonder by introducing the virtual, do you think it could change?
Not necessarily. I want to be, it doesn't mean more demand. It just means that somebody wants this course who wasn't able to get in a seat in person.
Yeah.
That's what it means. It doesn't mean we have more kids who want to take it necessarily. Does that make sense?
Do you think this might change that dynamic and create more kids who want to go virtual now rather than a TCAPS teacher?
No, no. Kids overall are more successful when they're in seats with teachers all the way through. When you look at AP scores.
Yeah.
And engagement in the course.
So the difference between those two lines, one, they're committing to a year, like, both semesters, and the other one, they're just committing to the first semester? Is that the difference between those two bullets? Where it says AP Calc AB and then AP Calc AB Semester One? Is that the difference? The second and third bullets? Oh, okay. You know what? It's changed from the memo, the printed memo we had.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, no, it's, it's.
Just one, yeah. On our printed memo, it had it twice. Okay.
Jessie?
Yeah.
Will we give people more of an opportunity for another elective?
That History of Rock, you mean, for instance? Yes, and I do have the course description up. Are you interested in me reading the course description? Okay.
I'm good on that, but I was just thinking, because we're so tight on a lot of electives, that I was wondering if it just gave them a little bit more flexibility.
That's the idea. That's the idea. Social Studies is the one that students need three years of to graduate. But oftentimes, we see kids wanting to take a fourth year or an elective. We have Crime and Justice, which falls under that. We have a History of Sports, which is a really cool elective. We have some AP. But it's nice just to have another elective that's in that discipline, so, you know?
Yeah, appreciate it. All right, my last question on this topic. I remember y'all said a couple of months ago that the AP Environmental Science was getting really popular.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if you were able to accommodate everybody this year, but did they look at adding an MVHS class for AP Environmental Science?
We added sections. So at Central High School, we now have two teachers who are teaching it. And at West Senior High, the teacher who normally had two sections, we ran an additional section. So we have more actual kids in seats on those. And I would guess, because it's not on here, but I'd have to look at the course catalog. It might already be in the course catalog.
Yeah.
These are ones that are not in.
These are all additional.
Great, all right. All right, if there are.
We'll double-check that, though, Jessie.
Yeah, okay. Then I think, third no further questions. We will move on to put that on the agenda as usual, the consent agenda, and move on to the learning series. Diane Tiesworth.
So today, we wanted to highlight our English learner program and invited two teachers with us today. Nicole Van de Kolk-Ryne is our content leader for our elementary program. And then Amanda White is our content leader for our secondary program, both EL teachers in the district. And they'll be going through some information today with us also. Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just a quick overview of the students in TCAPS, how many we have. So 148 elementary, 64 at middle, and 79 at high school. And that's kind of fluctuating day by day. Students are first identified, what they do is a home language survey. So when they come in, if they indicate that they have a language spoken at home other than English, they go through the home language survey. And then we continue to monitor them as we, during the WEDA process, the WEDA test that they take on a yearly basis. Elementary EL uses something similar, as we do with EL2, in that our EL teachers will push into classrooms, and they'll also pull out to do separate lessons. And secondary, they actually enroll in an ESL class that they attend on a daily basis. And then we have two family liaisons that help with interpreter needs in our district. DB Craig does Spanish, and Alicia Powers helps with Ukraine, Ukrainian. And then also on top of that, we have an interpreting service called Genie that we started last year. Kind of a virtual live that can interpret for, we haven't found a language it can't interpret for at this point. So it's really nice that you have a live person on the other end, it's similar to a FaceTime call, and it can come in and interpret. Again, if these two interpreters are not easily available, they also can jump into that.
Are they, so those two family liaisons, they're full-time staff who come in?
They're hourly. So what they do is they keep track, they're contractual, so they keep track when they're needed. They write those hours down and then turn those in. So there's no set schedule they have, rather than they kind of keep track of their hours again by contract.
Then they move from building to building as needed?
Very much so.
Okay.
That's what we did at the hospital. We opened interpreters on.
Now, is that a relatively new development? Or like, has it been spoken hours for them or anything like that?
No, we've always had interpreters in the district that help. And, you know, outside of doing interpreters, they also help, again, the idea of the family liaison. So the help is that conduit at times for all needs that these families have throughout the school year.
Cool, great, thank you.
And the good thing about that, too, is it's not just the language. It's context also, and that can be really important.
Cultural context.
Yes, yes.
So these are our current elementary numbers. And as Dan mentioned, we're still very much in the identification process. So these numbers do kind of change daily. And we also have students that have achieved a high enough English proficiency level that they're still in our buildings, but don't require English language services anymore. So you can notice that just some trends that are in city limit buildings tend to be our biggest ones, and that's historically been true. Whereas some of our, like, quartet, we see less students. And that really helps drive some of our department goals with student connections and where we concentrate some of our resources.
Do you say that there's been any significant change in recent years in these student populations? Or like, you just seen growth in those same areas, Central Grade and Traverse Heights in particular?
I think generally speaking, they're pretty similar. We have seen more students coming to us with more limited English. So these numbers don't tell us proficiency levels. So that's maybe a bigger difference. I think Traverse Heights has grown. And when you think about the total number of that school, we're looking at a little over 20% of the building is English learners. And I do think that is a newer trend, but part of that is probably tied to housing in our city.
Yeah, a lot of growth around Traverse Heights, for sure. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, these numbers represent the secondary numbers that we have within our five buildings, serving East Middle School, West Middle School, Central High School, West Senior High, and Traverse City High. And as Dikin mentioned, we have seen shifts within populations within buildings. So overall, the numbers are consistent as we look at some trends. But we see some buildings that may have higher populations because of where students are living. We also may see a change because of student, foreign exchange students at the high school level, which qualify for EL services.
I was surprised to see that the middle school, where the middle school is high, the high school is smaller, that it seemed like they seesawed a little bit. That was interesting.
And sometimes students are exiting EL services by the time they get to high school. So you will see those numbers drop.
Yeah, the ultimate goal is, you know, Amanda's at East Middle School. She does a phenomenal job. She hopes that her students, if they're with her all three years, will grow their English skills and proficiencies and will actually not need as much intensive support as they move into high school, so.
Yeah, I was wondering if that's what was happening with Central. Wasn't quite sure what was happening with West? Because you have considerably fewer down in the middle school, and then it more than doubles when it's high school.
My guess is the east population, the east middle school is based on the housing. That we're, you know, that direct pipeline of Heights, Central, East Middle School. Is that a fair statement?
I'd say that's accurate.
Yeah.
And then do we get a certain amount of kids that are older, that are moving, like, I think, into West High School? Like, maybe especially like our East Middle School population? You know, like, so we may get kids that are high school age when they come to us more, too. It's interesting. That is an interesting trend.
Yeah, but it's, to your point, it's not.
It's the opposite almost of, you know, the high school. It's interesting that Central High School is lower, but again, but also the fact that we're getting a lot of kids hopefully prepared is what's happening.
And that could literally change next year, next three years with these middle school students moving to high school. It's not like they're all defecting to the West side.
It's a very transient population. I think these guys would say that very much so. And so, yeah, a lot of it's based on where the families and where the locations right now are.
And this is, this is currently as of today. So as we move through, right, we didn't, if we were to show last year's data, maybe we see the middle schools higher, and therefore they moved up as it ebbs and flows, yeah.
So these are just the languages represented. We have at least 18 languages that we know of that families speak at home. And then this is just a general breakdown again on the data that we do have. So almost half of our population speaks Spanish. Our second most frequently spoken language is Ukrainian. And then Vietnamese and Chinese follow. And then some of those other smaller languages, we tend to sometimes see in pockets. So you might have one building that has a high percentage of students who speak Persian, but then it's not spoken at any other building. So that's also kind of a fun trend to follow. And that's where Genie has been really helpful. That was the interpreter service that the district adopted last year, because I've sat through, like, an IEP meeting where we're able to basically FaceTime someone that speaks Vietnamese, who can help us interpret those really important parent meetings for us. And then DB and Aliza, our two liaisons, are able to also help with the bulk of our families and their interpreting needs. And like Dan said, help them connect with resources, like our student health clinic, or get them enrolled in LEAP Sports. So we've, we have been really happy to adopt that interpreting service to help with some of those smaller, less frequently spoken languages.
Yeah, I, any, any feedback on the Genie, his service from the students or the families?
I would say that from, on our end, on the building end, it's been really amazing. Like, if a child, let's say, gets sick and the parent requires an interpreter, all of our AAs have access to those accounts there, the ones that actually hold the accounts. And so it's made those types of things a lot easier. We are still working for ways to let our parents contact us. And so like, something that we worked on at the elementary level is we're now doing a bilingual attendance form, where we send families home with a business card and a QR code, and it links them to a Google form, so a parent can call in their own child's attendance if they're sick. So we are working on more ways that the parents can get through to us in that sense. And we're really lucky that Google has an amazing suite of translation services that are free. And as we have more bilingual staff members in our program, I think we're becoming more aware of those needs as well, like gaps that we didn't necessarily see before with just a monolingual staff. So I think that's where we're headed, is just thinking of more creative ways to have our parents contact us when they need us.
Excellent.
And some of the learning platforms, like CSO, they could interpret into their own language. So if you would send a message, elementary sends a message out, they can receive all of that information in their phone.
Class Dojo, a lot of that is embedded. Yeah, and some of our curricular supports, we're starting to see two in multiple languages, so.
I have to say, this was really fascinating. I knew about the Spanish and the Ukrainian, the Vietnamese, but not the rest. So really interesting to see our district grow that way.
So this is our elementary staff. We have Emily Fetter's at Blair and Long Lake, Haika at Cherry Newland Quartet, Jessica Loginsky is at Eastern Montessori in Willow Hill, Kathleen Schneider at Central Grade Silver Lake in West Woods, and then I am at Traverse Heights. And three of us have our masters in teaching ESL, and two of us are bilingual. And another two of us have a really extensive background in teaching reading intervention. So really excited about the team that we have this year and the experience that everyone brings to it.
And this is our secondary team, which also includes Tanya Donoghue, Ben Lance, and Heidi Gregory. And what's really nice about our secondary team is we are also teaching in the content area. It can help our students succeed and interact with our colleagues to help students not only in ESL, but other classes that they may be taking.
This is a little bit of a change from prior years. At our elementary, we had just two certified teachers and a lot of instructional aid support. And we really, I mean, Dan really took the lead with changing, Dan and Nikki, changing the model and providing all certified staffing who's doing the servicing to our students. Funding-wise, just so you guys know, we do get a little bit of categorical funds to support EL. We get a little bit in our federal Title III, very little, like, I say, like, $25,000. And then we get a little bit in what's called 41A, also less than $100,000. And when you think about this population of students, they need additional supports to access the school, to access all components of it. These guys have separate curriculum they use with our students. We do, like we said, the translating skills, all of those things. And so that then all comes, because those categoricals don't cover it all. That just comes then out of general funds for us.
Yeah, so that was a change this year from.
Yeah, Nick, you were gonna touch base on it also, but just to thank the board and Dr. Vane Wagner to kind of see the need as far as, it was a huge transition. We had two EL elementary teachers in previous years in aid support. And as far as contact hours with students, the state only recognizes those contact hours that teachers, certified teachers have. So although we are still servicing kids with aid support, it didn't actually fall within the requirements of the state. So we, like Jessie mentioned, we have put more funding towards our EL program through at-risk and general fund, so that every, now we have teachers with caseloads that are manageable. We want to keep those caseloads right around 30-ish. They're a little higher, especially with Nikki at Traverse Heights with that population. But we find one teacher at one location is better than splitting the population up. But it's, we've made huge strides, so we appreciate your support.
I have a question. For the kids that are, that is their first language, and then English is their second, do they ever go on and major into that language? Literature as well as the language? I mean, if you come in speaking Russian, it just opens up all the Russian literature to you. You don't have to translate. So I'm wondering if we're able, do we encourage them basically to piggyback off of what they already have?
We definitely leverage home language support, and that is up to each individual family if they continue to pursue an education in their native language. I don't have a specific scenario to share where a student has majored in their home language.
I was just kind of curious. You know, I had a friend, I knew people that were bilingual in quite a few languages. And I had one friend that was getting her masters in French because she wanted to be an interpreter at the UN, and you have to be fluent in six languages to do that. So Panzi had five, and was going for her sixth. And by fluent, it means she could be in one language and move just very fluidly right into another. And just, it was just amazing. So I was kind of wondering, you know, you kind of see, a lot of times immigrant families shut down one language to only let the language most commonly spoken be the dominant language. And I'm kind of hoping that we encourage kids also to keep what they have.
Absolutely, and some of our students, for example, will attend Ukrainian school in the evening or even maintain status as Ukrainian students virtually in the evening.
Some of our fifth graders, as they're selecting their electives from middle school, also get very excited, if they're Spanish speakers, to take Spanish classes. So, I mean, that is a language that we can very easily support that. And I wanted to come back to the teaching model changes that Jessie and Dan mentioned. Another thing, just from my perspective, aside from the more contact time with students, it's also allowed us to attend all-staff professional development and meetings of the buildings that we're working in. it's also allowed us to attend all staff professional development and meetings of the buildings that we're working in. And so something that's been tremendously helpful for me is I am now able to work with a lot of the Gen Ed teachers at Traverse Heights, especially as we roll out CKLA. Um, having that contact time instead of being at five buildings, instead of one, that's been really helpful. And then you can see from here, one of our goals is really to hone in on helping our students feel connected at their local buildings. And so even little things like, um, before we couldn't require assistants to attend parent teacher conferences, for example. Or, you know, Eastern does a carnival and Traverse Heights has a fancy dance. These are opportunities now that we're not spread so thin, that we're able to, to attend, we will be able to attend parent teacher conferences and some of those extra school events and help make sure that our families are engaged in them. So aside from being more compliant with having more certified ESL teachers, we're also just gaining a lot more time in our buildings, which I think will certainly benefit our students and their families. Um, and then speaking of CKLA, that's been another tremendous help in giving our department direction because um, a lot of our teachers right now are kind of in lockstep on rolling out CKLA. We have um, two areas that really support English language learning. There are parts embedded right into the Gen Ed CKLA curriculum that um, really give helpful tips for all levels of English language proficiency speakers. So something I might do at Traverse Heights is take all of the kindergarteners and work on that particular lesson that they're also getting in their general education class. And then they also have a separate component that supports CKLA that we're starting to get oriented with called Language Studio. Um, and so we have that this year that we're trying to work with too, to help support and supplement that. Um, and then the final change that we've made is, um, and this is a big thanks to um, Dan and Jesse and the board for supporting this, but we have a new software system that allows us to communicate better with general education teachers, what the language needs are of our students. So the WEETA test is something that we are required annually to give, but it spits out numbers that can be really nebulous to someone who doesn't have an extensive background in teaching ESL. So we purchased a software system called EduSkills that was created by a former um, head of ESL for Oklahoma City Public Schools. And basically, it allows us to tell teachers what those numbers mean and what English language development standards they're tied to. So that has been a tremendous help. It also allows us to put in any WEETA um, accommodations, M-step accommodations, so that those are gonna follow students, especially as they transition from fifth to sixth grade, so that our secondary teachers don't have to backtrack and figure out, hey, like what supports were these students getting? So that has been incredibly helpful purchase for our program. It saved us a lot of time and especially our general education teachers. It's given them a clear picture of what students need quickly. Um, and then I just wanted to share at the elementary level, our department goals. So we're really trying to help boost that student achievement and it's really, really possible and tangible now with CKLA. So we're really locking down into that. And then, like I mentioned earlier, our, our, our objective as a department, we're really looking for ways to boost that family engagement. So that, that bilingual Google attendance form and then, you know, we'll be meeting more to discuss how, what are other ways we can really connect our families at the local school level? Um, what are ways we can really engage with them and get them what they need? So their students feel like a part of this community, even if language is a significant barrier.
One other question, it kind of blends across not just foreign language, but to English as well. What do you do when we have so many forms, but people are basically illiterate in whatever language the form is in? Um, how do we deal with that?
Well, we're lucky that some of us are bilingual. So like, for example, if a student enrolls and they're unable to read the enrollment form, like they can pull a teacher who's bilingual to go read it to them. But we also have iPads that you can take a picture and it will read it out loud. And that's true even with CKLA students who are really fluent in their first language, but not literate. Sometimes we use that to really help boost comprehension. So I feel grateful to be teaching this in two thousand twenty-five and we have so many technologies that assist with that process. But it's not, um, even though that we encounter that, it really hasn't been a barrier for our families. We have enough bilingual adults in our community to really help get what we need done.
To read.
And we've done, I know Jesse can speak in more detail about communications, but we've done a lot on the communications end to make sure everything that we have from we're facing for our families can be interpreted in some way, shape, or form. So for instance, we moved all of our schools over to Smore newsletters, Smore is a software. And you can, every newsletter that goes out, you just drop down and interpret. So we're, we're aware of that, everything that's out on our web or any form we have, we continue to work on making sure that it's translated.
And we mark, these guys help us mark and find families who only read in their native language. So when they get communication pushed through our power schools or our SIS, it goes and we have a tag in which their communication comes through in the language in which they read, it's already set for that. So we've got that sort of in play too.
What, what languages are y'all uh, bilingual in?
I speak Spanish and English. I used to be a Spanish teacher at West. Um, and then another one of our elementary ESL teachers also speaks Spanish. And then we have noticed Ukrainians are second most represented language. A lot of our Ukrainian parents are either learning English or are very literate in Ukrainian. And so they don't necessarily face the same challenges that some of our other language families do. And Amanda can speak for secondary, yeah?
Yes, I also speak Spanish and we have several staff members at East Middle School that speak Spanish as well.
And Russian and Ukrainian, I think are pretty, pretty kinship type.
Yeah, they are, and we have um, a junior kindergarten aide at Traverse Heights that speaks Ukrainian. And then Aliza, our longtime liaison, she's, she really knows everyone, so we call on her a lot too.
Thank you.
Looking at what we offer at the secondary level, it is a little different at the middle school versus the high school. At the middle school, I have two ESL sections, which are organized by grade level or proficiency level. And the same is true at West Middle School. So two sections, putting our newcomers, students that are new to learning English in a section, and then higher level students that require different needs in another section. The middle school teachers, we also have a time on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays called Seminar that we're able to support our content area teachers or work with students individually with different reading interventions or fluency, or take a look at a teacher's lesson plan and see how it may become more accessible for our EL learners. At the high school level, they also ha- they have something similar. Um, they have a section with class, a multi-grade class, as well as a part of their day to help support content area teachers to help with success in those classrooms. Our curriculum is new, this is our second year using it, is the National Geographic Learning. So there is a unique curriculum for English language learning that is different than an ELA class. We focus on English language acquisition, acquisition to help with content mastery in the classroom. And it offers five different options. And so we look at a student's proficiency level and what would best fit that students need when we're developing curriculum. We also, as I mentioned, look for where students need comprehensive support in other parts of their day or even outside of their school day to make sure that they're engaged in the school and the community. We work with our colleagues in the LEAP office to see how we can help enroll them in sports, our clubs, our other activities, or even attend school events such as the homecoming dance that we just had.
Excellent, I'm just curious about that National Geographic Learning curriculum. Um, so if this is the second year, what, what was the feedback like from the teachers year one?
It's a very engaging curriculum. It uses authentic resources to draw students in. It's really comprehensive with listening, speaking, reading, and writing. It also has an online Spark platform, which complements what we're doing in the classroom. It allows us to really tier out needs that different students have when you're working with multi-grade level students. That's really important that you have a curriculum that is going to allow some personalization. Students find it very engaging and it also does a really nice job of supporting the content areas.
And I just have one more question about um, these sections at the secondary level.
Sure.
That constitutes their, their ELA?
It does not.
Oh, so it's an elective?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So that does have some implication for them, like in terms of they have one other elective to pick a STEM or an arts class or whatever.
Absolutely, and at the middle school, for example, with higher level students, we have some flexibility with our scheduling. For example, I have a student that just sees me on A days instead of B days because the student wants to play in the orchestra. And so we make that happen, there is flexibility.
And at the high school, um, our students still are required two credits in world language. But a lot of times, we will see these students earn those two credits because they have that proficiency in their home language, right? And so they're able to like not have to necessarily take that additional world language class because they have the proficiency in this. There are ways in which, we call it a, a PC at the high school, a personal curriculum, we're able to write for these students that can, that can fulfill that Michigan merit requirement, so. Perfect, perfect sense, that does make sense, yeah. Yeah, Dan and I just really. We got that one right, Beth, the state did. Um, yeah, Dan and I just really wanted you guys to meet Amanda and Nikki. We wanted to kind of give them a little kudos. This is the first year we've had some EL leadership, they're teacher leaders that receive a, a small stipend to help us just organize and make sure we're supporting teachers. I mean, this program, we're talking about about five percent or so of our student population, but they're very vulnerable, right? It, it, they're, they need a lot of support. We have to make sure we're intentional about, what does it look like K-12 for that support? How does it change? How do we, I mean Amanda's, or sorry Nikki's right, we have to, how do we build relationships with these families, right? How do we build trust and how do we make them feel welcome when language and not having that language is such a barrier? Um, and so we really, we've done a lot of work this last year led by these guys to reorganize it and make sure the teachers have the resources they need. And we just thought it was worth us bringing it to the board and making sure you guys are aware of the work that's happened behind the scenes, so.
I think it's great. One last question, forgive me. And that is, do we in any place in the curriculum include, uh, is it a Nishnabi?
Nishnabi, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is our Indigenous Education Program, that's a work in progress. So I've been working with Lydia and working with tribe, because we received a grant recently um, to include that in our curriculum. So we're gonna, we're trying to figure out, we had this program oh, about fifteen years ago at the middle schools, where we had Nishnabi one and one and two. Um, and that has since gone away, but now we've, we have the grant to bring it back. So we're just trying to figure out the format and what that looks like. Uh, I've also talked to some, some people at Michigan Virtual to see if they could help us build out a class that can be uh, um, supported by um, the tribe here, Grant Travis Band.
I think that's great, because I'd hate to see it be a dead language.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, that, that's a different conversation for another day. I, I know y'all will keep us posted on that in progress.
It's in that language.
Yes, absolutely. I, I hate to talk dollars and cents, but uh, have to think of the finance side of things too. So with the changes this year, um, you mentioned, and I concur, that the state and federal funds are minimal. Um, and the rest will have to come from the general fund. So what did, would the district have to, you know, offset that with?
Well, it depends, I guess how you look at it as far as offsetting what our original program was with, with teacher aides. I'm gonna give you some approximate numbers here. So we had to offset what we were paying in teacher aid, we took that money and then hired FTE. So that was a one for one. Uh, beyond that, we probably added just a little more than another FTE, which we had to take out of a combination of, of at-risk. We're, we're probably looking at about a hundred and fifty grand.
I'd consider that a well-spent at-risk.
Between that and general fund. But there, there is a, again, going back to state of Michigan, there's a level of compliance we have to hit. And previously, we weren't near that.
I understand, it's not, it wasn't a choice.
It really wasn't, and we, I think we had to right the ship, we all recognize it. And we, and we just don't know what pot right now that comes out of. Right, because, you know, right now, we don't, as we sit here right now, I couldn't tell you.
I would say, FTE-wise, we have about, I think it's six point six or six point five FTE teaching staff. And so if you guys kind of do the multiplier of what an FTE is approximately, one-ten, is that sound about right? And I would say between our forty-one A and our Title III, which we're allowed to spend on that, I mean, that maybe covers one and a half FTE. So the rest of it, um, and then that doesn't even count curricular resources, the EduSkills that Nikki talked about, um, release time, like things that they, that we know that our teachers need to be prepared to serve these kids. That's a little bit um, above and beyond what our general um, education teachers need. Um, and then we, Dan and I just kind of, yeah, like I said, Dr. Rand Wagner said, just try to look at the pots of money and figure out what can we access. At-risk is a great one, we don't know what's in there though, it's like this unknown. Um, but it's a great one for us to try to support that. That's great, great. Thanks so much for being here today and helping give us this overview of the program.
And they're gonna depart back to their classrooms, so thank you. Thank you.
Keep up the great work.
Thanks so much.
Okay, we're moving on to our discussion item, the Town and Gifted Program, otherwise known as TAG. I'm going to defer again to Dana Piesworth.
And I'll just, I'll kind of just start out with, this is a conversation that um, is, is really now precipitated by the move of Central Grade. So uh, as you all know, our, our TAG program has been housed for many years at Central Grade. And with us vacating Central Grade, um, and coming in this building next year, we knew that we didn't have quite enough room for our preschool and our TAG programs to stay housed in here while the three-year construction phase is going on at Central Grade. So the conversation that we've had is where would we have room in the district to be able to house the TAG kids while that three-year construction phase is going on? So that's the first thing that we've had to do. And so um, we've looked at a lot of different options, which includes even funding with title and buildings and all those things. And at this point, uh, we are prepared, uh, right now, looking at having uh, two classes um, at Eastern Elementary and two at Silver Lake Elementary. Um, is our plan as of right now. Um, and that uh, we, we have room, uh, both, we will have a preschool classroom at Eastern that we're going to have to figure out where that goes, we're looking at different options with that. Um, but uh, tho- those are the two right now that um, that create that. And, and that creates, just because of space right now, an east and a west side TAG program. The question from there is, um, after the three years, then what? One of the things that's also in play is that the architects right now are figuring out number of classrooms and space to be redesigned um, at Central Grade. And so they're asking us the question of how many? And this is a conversation I've had with most of the, if not all, board members um, over the last couple of years. I've just, there's been an idea, we had a public comment this morning about trying to create some type of equity. Um, and so we, we have had that conversation about, do you create more opportunity if you have something on the east side and the west side of town? Um, transportation is uh, still an, an issue, but if you can get a kid into this, the busing boundaries of Silver Lake or Eastern, it, it is a little easier. Um, and in the future, if we had more bus drivers, which we've struggled with for many years now, so I don't, I don't want to give a false hope, but if there was, we could try and figure out maybe some type of transfer system uh, from our middle school. So we could have kids ride the secondary routes in the morning and then be a shuttle to um, each of the sites. Again, not possible right now at all with our bus driver situation, but maybe, just maybe in the future, that's something that could be considered if we wanted to do that. So the conversation um, this month needs to happen at the board. Um, just first, just of a notification of what our plans are um, for, for the construction period. But it also now needs to really be determined, uh, after that three years, what that looks like. Um, and so I know that talking to board members and having this on there, there's some different data points and things that were asked, we were able to put together what we were able to um, over the weekend with that. Um, so with that, I'll kind of kick it off to Dan and, and kind of run with the conversation here where the committee wants to go, so.
Yeah, so we just started with just a general overview. I think we're, we're all aware of most of these things, four sections of TAG, two fourth grade sections, two fifth grade sections. Have been traditionally what we've done over the past several years, I don't actually remember a program that, that didn't run this way. Um, admission to TAG is based on a. Um, admission to TAG is based on the COGAT scores, well, NWA scores and teacher input. So as mentioned by our, our public comment today, um, we have a COGAT test that's given to third graders. I thought we did a pretty good job and I guess we can look at how to promote this even more. But as far as getting it out to school newsletter, social media posts, press releases, we try to make this as many people aware as this test as possible. Because we know, and, and Kelly does a lot of the makeup testing, that any testing we can't get done during that testing window in February, they're just one-off tests and it's quite time intensive, so.
For clarification, those tests happen at the homeschool of the child, correct?
They do, yeah. Yeah, so that's during February, we do the, we do about a month of sign up. Uh, students will sign up. We assign, sometimes we have several students outside of the district. Uh, Pathfinder, Woodland, Trinity Lutheran, schools like that that want to come in and test. We assign them to the old mission.
Yeah.
Uh, we assign them to their closest school. They come in that day and test with those students. Go through the process. Keeping in mind, you know, COGAT is a, is kind of that, a test that looks at that reasoning. Um, not necessarily like specific questions that where they're doing actual math or language arts problems, right? They're looking for patterns. It's more, it's looking more towards that IQ based. For, three parts of it that we give verbal, quantitative and non-verbal. We really, when we're looking at who gets, as far as trying to figure out the best cut scores for TAG, we really focus on that quantitative and verbal. Uh, the quantitative math portion, uh, essentially, and I've discussed this before, I think in individual conversations. But as they go through, we talk about how, um, certain subjects are, are accelerated or, or they're enriched, right? The, the math is actually accelerated. So when they leave TAG, um, they're moving into seventh grade math going into middle school. So they cover three years of math in two years.
Dan, do we set what the line is, the cutoff line for the invitation to go into TAG? Or is that set by the overall, whatever there might be?
No, we, we set it on, originally on numbers, right? We know that we have two sections. We have sixty spots. So we start for sixty spots unless we see like, maybe an anomaly in the testing where we see an abundant amount of students who national percentile and COGAT and NWA line up that we think we could support another section, we would do so. But traditionally, what we do is we take those first sixty, and what we usually see is that when we invite, we usually invite people that might be outside the percentile that usually would maybe struggle successfully in an, in an actual gifted program. Right? So we usually invite more, I think, a- as far as a gifted program goes, um, that might be able to actually excel in the program. We, we haven't had a spot where we look at and we go, we need to open another section because we have this many that are ninety-ninth percentile on their winter and, on their spring NWA. Right? We haven't been in that spot yet.
Like an A group that have, are the top test scorers, and then you have like a B group that you can dip down to, right?
Yes, we have a yes, a waiting list and a no is, is what we generally, generally go with. And they have to accept, and like public comment said, and this is, there's a lot of factors that, that go into accepting the TAG, right? They have the score, and then I, and I'll show, uh, in some stats here coming up, that even though they're invited, uh, there are a lot of students that don't intend to stay at their own school. And then what they decide to do then is move into seventh grade math when they get into middle school. So they stay caught up, whether that's in the classroom, that's during summer work. Uh, but regardless, if they qualify for the COGAT in elementary, that qualification can, they can use that to then skip sixth grade math during their, uh, during their middle school years.
But then they do that on their own, basically, to prepare for the seventh grade.
Yeah, or they have so, yeah, and there's some schools that have pockets of, of enough kids in it. Or in, in any school, actually, in fifth grade, right, where there's a differentiation that takes place, where the teacher can then help, you know, move the students along. Is that, is that a hundred percent in every school with, with every student? It's hard to say as far as the number of students that have that differentiation going on in pockets. But there is, there is a large component where we would have teachers, as a middle school principal, we'd have parents come in and say, we'd like our child to take seventh grade math. And then we would have a, pretty much a packet of supports, a teacher would give us to help them throughout the summer so they would be ready.
Yeah, I, that is, that is my concern with TAG. Um, and that is that I, I can see where it's great. If you can move faster, you'd rather move faster than sit there and be bored. I understand that one hundred percent. However, then somebody like John Handy comes along and says, you need that mix of kids that moves the whole classroom in. And, um, you know, I, there were a couple of schools where it was giving the numbers tested. The ones offered a position, and then the ones who actually took the TAG opportunity. And you could maybe only have a third of the kids that were offered the opportunity who actually took it. And so again, how that plays out. And then another question that I had, um, that I didn't see in the material, the material was great. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, was, does it impact at all, when you looked at, at the overall testing scores, are you factoring the TAG student scores into Traverse City's overall, uh, NWEA and those scores? So.
Yeah, they're factored in the central grade scores. And, and our overall T caps.
But then when you look at independently the different schools, comparatively, are some of those schools just a little bit lower simply because their TAG students are pulled out?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think there's, there's some of that that happens. I think you see it more on the central grade side. And when, when we look at data with central grade, right, and they do data meetings there, and they look at their fifth grade data, they separate it out, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we used to take that data out.
It's, it, but you know, to give you an idea of an inverse from a resource standpoint, if this does go out of central grade, correct me if I'm wrong, yeah, but I know we've had this conversation, central grade is close to becoming a full Title I school.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So there are more resources that come with a full Title I school, like Blair and Travisite.
And we ran numbers with Silver Lake and it wouldn't pull them on a title. Silver Lake would still be eligible. That, that was one of our concerns. Right now, Silver Lake is a partial title school. And if we, at the free and reduced percentage were to change, if we add, um, anywhere from fifty to sixty kids, it could be like one section each, right, of the TAG over here. Sandy ran some numbers in it and it did not, so.
Yeah, and it looks like a third of the kids in TAG, not a third, uh, fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent are, are free and reduced.
Yep. So, you know, that's why looking at the sites is like, it was, it's a bit of a science of figuring out from a resource, of federal funding, of all those things. So that's a big part of where we landed, especially with the west side, um, school. Yeah, Silver Lake was that fit. And you also look at, you know, the, the reality of trying to bring people in. So, you know, the two schools, Silver Lake is kind of that center of the hub of Blair, Westwoods, Long Lake, you know, that fit, and then Eastern, you know, we really did, don't have, and, and with our growing population, Traverse Heights is, is packed to gills. Obviously, we're adding three classrooms. Long Lake, the amount of, of building and housing that's going up there right now, with apartments especially, is big. You know, at that point, Cortez, obviously, the far edge of the district. So that's where the land did on the two buildings we did for the program. And also looking at those resources, federal and state.
Would you be able to, to consider someplace like Blair, which has more open classrooms? Are they solid enough that it wouldn't undercut the funding?
I think the problem is, is that they're on so far the edge of the district that a lot of people won't select it because they may be coming to work in town. Again, because you're looking at transportation. So those far edges of the district generally struggle. I'll give you an example of where that's been done, and, and help me out history-wise. But there was a, I, a international baccalaureate program that was trying to interlock an elem-, uh, uh, elementary school. Really struggled to get enrollment from that standpoint.
Earth of Oz too.
And then they.
Earth of Oz as well. They tried the far two extremes and it, and it didn't have success.
Yeah.
To the east side, I mean, Cortez would be another option. They have room. But again, if we talk about, the, the, the same idea as equity, right, as far as, when Dr. Rand Wagner mentioned, the idea of maybe using some type of middle school busing or, or some type of shuttle service if we go to that route eventually, that makes it even harder to accomplish that, the farther out those schools are.
That, that's our struggle. That's our geography struggle, that is T caps we have that a lot of other places do not.
Yeah. The only other one I thought, I think the west side one was Silver Lake being right in the middle of Willow Hill, Long Lake, Westwoods. I mean, that's, that's a really great spot on the west side. Um, on the east side, I just want to acknowledge Eastern is still very far north. So Traverse Heights to me would be a little bit.
But we just don't have, it's the way we're on. And we're already, you know, struggling and, and, right.
Traverse Heights.
And, and we're running out of space in that direction, really, you know, from that point, so.
I thought we were in capacity with Eastern too, but if we pull out, and I, and I, I did want to ask, this is just a logistical thing, um, potentially financial, but with Eastern and Silver Lake for that matter, is there, is there going to be any cost in retrofitting rooms, like particularly converting a preschool to a fourth and fifth grade?
No, you would have the opposite with bathroom and stuff, but no. You know, because what we'll do is we'll just shift younger kids into those and then we'll have kids. Because by law, like in our two-story buildings, you have to have your younger kids on the first floor. So we would just shift that down. And so, um, it, you know, that, that's, that's a challenge, we're, but we're working on. We've talked with the boat board about the future of Oak Park, you know, right there as well as, in, in the long run, to be able to have that early childhood center concept that also helps that cause that we're, with Eastern, you know. Um, so in the three years, yeah, it could cause a little bit, but we're committed to not have, you know, like, there, there's one classroom there that's a library currently at Eastern that we want to maintain. So we, we'll, we'll figure out, we're trying to work with our ISD partners and possibly, we had a preschool at Oak Park previously. Um, and, and to get out, so is that maybe an option? So we've got a work cut out for us to figure that out, but we'll figure that out.
Okay, so it's just one preschool classroom at Eastern that would have to be?
One's already, um, we're down one this year already, and so it would be one more, one more preschool classroom that would, um, be at a different site, um, there to be able to have the younger kids go into that and open up those two older, older kid classrooms.
Okay, so just to be clear, if we don't have space at Oak Park, what are other alternatives and what are the financial implications to the district? Like, we're renting space? Just want to be very proactive and transparent here.
You know, could be, you know, we, we have space at Central High School there that's where the robotics was a possibility. Um, you know, so there, there are multiple options there to look at. Um, we're, we're not that far yet. You know, this is, we kind of need a decision, you know, like, you know, and, and long-term where the board goes also kind of might play into this. You know, of how we, we go of a plan of attack with it.
And another thing I think we have to think about, and that is how do you handle the traffic? That would be a problem, I think, more at Traverse Heights. If you had a lot of people bringing their kids, picking their kids up.
You know, I'll, I'll just be honest with you, it's a struggle no matter what building we're in. Right now, I mean, we have a lot with, you know, with our buses pretty packed because of the lack of drivers.
Easier because you have.
Agreed. I would, you know, to be clear, would love to be able to figure out a way to have more at Blair and Cortez, just that is a geographic challenge. That is really, really hard for us to figure out, you know. And as you, as the board notes, we've limited our school a twice down, like almost to nothing at our city schools, you know, to make sure that we can maintain and be able to, you know, do this. Um, the other thing too, Josie, is that from a preschool standpoint, going out to those elementaries is also adding another preschool. It may be a little bit of a height for folks, but it would still be an option and an opportunity at that standpoint to be able to do as well as kind of a Plan C, you know, if we can't get it closer to town from that standpoint as well for that other preschool classroom.
Yeah. Could you just remind us, like, what are the legal obligations in terms of preschool? So for, if you're, if you live within the boundaries of Eastern Elementary, you want to roll your kids their K through five.
Necessarily, if you, you know, if you do from that standpoint, obviously you have that right. But if you have kids in preschool and you live outside of that boundary, you have no automatic right to that building.
Right. But within boundary, I mean, are you, you know, by law, entitled to a spot at a preschool at that building? So.
No, we're not, we're not required to offer preschool on anybody.
Okay, I just wanted to.
It's really an ISD program that we, you know, that we host, you know, the, the coordinator's it, and that we host and, and do get the funding for. And we want to obviously do that as much as possible. But from that standpoint, we are not obligated, from that standpoint, we are obligated to offer in the district. Um, from that standpoint, just as we're not.
We might get some disgruntled parents that were moving the preschool out of Eastern Elementary. We just have to be aware and prepared to deal with that.
And hopefully, like you say, we're hoping to be able to have it real close, you know, from that standpoint, convenient. But we're, we're putting our failures out and getting down that work from that standpoint. But, um, we know we have room in other buildings and places. Um, we'll see where this building for sure lands out, you know. Um, for that, um, we know we don't have the room for all of the TAG, there's no doubt here. But like I say, as we get a little bit closer, those conversations, we'll let the board know. We'll figure out a place for them. And, and hopefully it's close, but we know we have spaces to add at some of the, the other elementary schools.
And going back to Oak Park, right from twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-nine, um, is it at full capacity with ISD?
Well, it has been, but you know, that's one of the questions right now they're looking at, is they have purchased, um, the, um, uh, at their headquarters, um, over on, uh, right right by the commons. They've purchased the other part of Pine Rest. And so they have, um, doing that and staff going in there, so that might free up some staff space. So that's the conversations I'm trying to have right now with them, and they, they, you know, mentioned it, they have had the chance to follow up to check back and have that. But like, that's, that's one of our, our hopes right now, but haven't had enough, you know, uh, feedback from that standpoint yet to know if that's a viable option. And it, and it may be a year here until they're able to figure that out based on what's happening over there and what they're able to do.
Okay. Well, I know this is also on the finance committee agenda for Thursday, so that's why I just keep, you know, questioning, are there financial implications? It sounds like right now, none are known, but there are potential financial implications, like if the district had to lease space.
Correct.
Or renovate a space, but.
But we, you know, and we probably wouldn't, that would be a very last option if we have classroom space somewhere else in the district at that point. Um, but, you know, right now, it would be minimal of what we, we believe our first options would be.
Okay. And back to the central grade architects, um, because this has come up a couple of times. So I, I mean, I know a couple of us are very familiar with that TAG space, those four classrooms. I thought that they were going to design those to be classrooms, no matter what, whether it's TAG or something else. So like on that second floor, in that tower area, what, what would that area be used for if not classrooms?
It would be classrooms, but it would be traditional third, fourth grade, fifth grade classrooms. So you know what, right now, I mean, you know, in the budget, it is much more of a limited scope. It's designed, um, you know, for about the amount of kids that we have now minus a TAG. Okay, now, third floor is a question that we've talked about many times. There's no reason the third floor in the future can't be used. We're just not building it out at, in this phase for that purpose. But it will be renovated, it will be brought up to code, all those kind of things is an option. But right now, there's the amount of actual first floor and second floor classrooms is being right-sized to the enrollment of that building minus the TAG program is what, right now, we're running under the assumption of, why we're bringing it to the board in that conversation. If we were to do four more classrooms, that increases the budget. All those things already for something that if we don't, you know, plan on doing, we don't want that. We're, we're making sure, we're also keeping some space for a little bit of growth within town. Also making sure that we have space for storage and things for Lars Hoxton that really doesn't have now. So that's kind of the question of, you know, just simply, are you going to spend the money for more renovations of classrooms or not? You know, with that future in mind, and, and why do that if the board is feeling like it's a good idea to try and create an east and a west side to create more opportunity, more opportunity and those kind of things, again, that is possible? Or no, we want to go back to central grade and leave it as is in the future? That's where we're at that point of, of, of decision-making now for the board to give that thought to.
Yeah, okay. All right, so now that we've covered the financial and the logistical issues, um, I think just philosophically, I think, you know, we, that's the important, most important.
Let's let Dan go ahead and go through the rest, and there are a lot of data you guys asked for to kind of put into and, and go from there.
Shout out to Kelly Walter. She helps. Um, so just to go through right now, ninety-eight, um, TAG students in a program that's lower than traditionally what we have. I think a lot of the, obviously families concerned about what the next building is, and they would have to move three different buildings in three years if they decided to elect in the TAG. Uh, just under ten percent for fourth and fifth grade in the district. Uh, we talked about some, um, statistics around economically disadvantaged, um, students. Right now, we're about fifteen percent. Uh, five oh four plans, it looks like there's two and then there's four with IEPs.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge, I mean, what I've observed over the years is that we normally have like up to a hundred and ten students.
Yes.
Like twenty-seven, twenty-eight per classroom, fifty-five per grade level, so this is a small, probably an outlier year.
For sure, right, like again, it goes to the idea if they're coming in here fourth grade, right? They're at whatever school they're at, third grade, fourth grade, different school, fifth grade, different school, and then obviously they go to middle school. So it's actually four different schools in four years, so that's, that's a lot of transition.
Sure.
To participate in, in, in the program itself, so we talked about, I think there were some questions too about what is a, you know, a price tag or financial commitment for the district to. Host tag or to have a tag program, and as long as our numbers stay close to, you know, that twenty-eight to thirty. I mean, that, that's our divider anyway when we do mission-based budget, now there is the idea that if you were to take those kids and spread them back out. Into all their other schools, would that push other schools into a section or push other schools into overload? And I think that's such a year to year, um, I think as long as the district, we always keep in mind our twenty-seven point eight what our divider, so if we keep it twenty-eight or higher. I think that's fiscally responsible as far as a teacher in front of them.
And, cause that would've pushed six more students out to Willow Hill.
Exactly. And, and, and Westwoods al- also was, was pretty full too, so, uh, that's the idea, right? From year to year, I mean, we could look at every number and every kid, but it doesn't automatically mean that all those schools can absorb about a hundred. Some kids and there'll be no extra sections at those schools, right?
Or split classrooms, our, our favorite popular choice.
But then if we'd taken fifteen of those kids who didn't go into tag, that were offered tag. It might relieve some of the congestion in those classrooms as well.
Then we add another section at central grade and then, and then you get into the, the numbers, right, where you need a number that's. Pretty much, we wanted to divisible by twenty-eight, right, so I used to run numbers when we did honors, for instance, at middle school, right, is that. We run the number of the section, you know, you have forty-two kids, forty-two is a number that, you know, fiscally is twenty-one and twenty-one. So then you start to, you wanna either fill the section or, or move down in the section, cause forty-two is a tough number, so it's a. There, there is some numbers that go into that also to make sure that we're, you know, that, that responsibility piece with.
I understand.
Yeah. So this has been, as far as testing in the district. Um, we're about twenty-two percent of our third graders took to test, I know there's been a lot of discussion about. Um, taking a test and getting the information out, we do, like Dr. Van Wagner mentioned, we do it at the homeschool. Um, try to make it accessible, accessible as possible for kids. Um, it's a three day, so they do about a half and we do, we break it up into three sections, about a half an hour to forty-five minutes.
Yeah, and I mean, that, that again is just one year of data, we don't know if that's an outlier, pretty average, but.
I would say it's pretty average, cause one thing we can do is we can poll, what's, what's tough for our data is that we, we have to spreadsheet. And I can work with Sophie on this, but the COGAT testing, who takes it is stored in the COGAT. You know, that system that we use that supplies us with the licenses for the test. Um, outside of that, when we talk about who gets in and, and the different groupings of kids. That starts getting on spreadsheets and whenever we put anything on a spreadsheet, we can't keep in Power School, pulling historical data can be a challenge, it can be done. Uh, but like this, for instance, when we compare to past years, we're always around that twenty-five percent mark.
And, and I don't know what the magic number, the ideal number would be for percentages, I don't, you know, I don't think. I think that's highly subjective or whatever, but, I mean, it just does seem to me like one out of five, one out of four. I get technically one out of four point five students are taking the test. I do think like the public commenter said, um, my observation over the years is that not every building. Or every third grade teacher promotes it the same, so, you know, district-wide communication is great. But that building level newsletter in the weekly email is really, really important for parents, but parents miss. They can't, you know, one mode of communication, it's like, you know, parent can easily miss. But because K through five students come home with paper, I know their backpacks are stuffed with paper, like, you know, third. Maybe, you know, the third grade teachers giving handouts, but anyway, all, this is all just over the years I've heard of. You know, certain building principals and teachers not promoting it as much as others, so just to create equal opportunity for kids. To really reinforce that idea, we wanna give everybody the opportunity to test. There could be kids who are not necessarily doing great in, in the classroom, but they have hidden talent. They could have that non-verbal side, that spatial, and they could be on the border with the verbal and, and math. And I just wanna create more opportunities for more kids as part of our equity work.
I, I just kinda played with some numbers, doing nothing else, you know, I don't watch TV, what are you gonna do?
Right.
So, some of our buildings, we teach one and, we test one in twenty students. One, the outliers are, at one school, we teach one in eighty-five and another outlier, we teach roughly. These are very ballparky.
Yep, yep.
One in a hundred and sixty, so there's a lot of variance in our testing my building. And I understand all populations aren't the same.
And, and resources, I just think there's a lot of parents that go, I don't have the transportation, I don't have that, you know.
Have the interest.
And so they just don't even consider having the kid test, so that's what will be interesting in a study if we do an east and a west. You know, and they go, well, the, the bus stop's just a mile down the road into, you know, the Silver Lake, you know, boundary. I'd be willing to drop them off there, but I'm not driving them all the way into, you know, central grade.
And I, I, I do think there are a fair number of students who just don't test, their families, whether it's an economic issue. Or we're just staying within our homeschool, we are good with what the elementary schools are doing and will make decisions at the middle school.
We're, we're gonna see a nudge on numbers on less central grade students going to tag next year in more Silver Lake because we provide busing. Right, that's the idea, there's, I think central grade, as you can see in all the stats we have, central grade has a pretty high number of. Of, of kids who test, e- even the kids who test, I know they're, they have a higher population at the school, but you're gonna see that move.
Right.
Cause we're no longer having a bus go to central, obviously central grade for, for tag and Silver Lake you will, so.
There's a lot of siblings there too, that, so that brings kids.
Yeah, yes.
And that's all, I mean, that's been the case since I was in elementary school.
Right, yeah, so next one, we, we did look at, we kinda stacked this one up as far as tested, qualified, accepted, so you get to kinda see that ratio. Always the interesting one here for me is qualified and then I actually took the invitation. Uh, and we saw that was a little more this year than in previous years where they did qualify and then we had less than accepted. As we went down, cause every person that was, um, on the waitlist got in. So the entire waitlist, so if we had our first sixty, then we went down to waitlists and those all also were all accepted. So I think that might've been a location or, or not knowing as far as future buildings.
And do the, the tag kids comparably do very similar year to year to year to year, that's, that's the case, so.
As far as scoring goes.
Yeah, so even if you end up with most of your kids coming off the waitlist, those, those kids continue to shine. Pretty much in that.
Yes, as far as going for wait, again, the concern is math again, as far as going down the waitlist when we talk about qualifying. I mean, that, cause the last thing you wanna do is have a kid in the program that ends up not liking school anymore, cause their math is so hard. So if we go back to like, what, cause you mentioned this, um, Josie, just as far as verbal quantitative, non-verbal. That quantitative score is one of our biggest measures of the three, so we just don't, even if a, a non-verbal might be through the roof, the problem is, is that. And the tag teachers that help us during this process have been doing this, you know, for years and we do have a turnover. We're bringing those other teachers into these meetings as far as, as far as how we qualify for tag. I mean, they, they can see it's crystal clear as far as those scores go and, and who's gonna struggle and who's not.
And they're very open, at their open house too, about that, right?
Do you have any data on retention? Like how many kids complete tag, how many kids?
Fourth to fifth, I would, just, just talking to teachers, I say we're well over ninety-five percent. It is like this year, I think we have one student who, um, went from four to five. And again, we're struggling with the math component, um, went back to, to a fifth grade classroom in central grade.
Okay.
So that's generally what we see, it's, it's either, most of the time it's none, it's like a hundred percent. They start in fourth grade, now how that moves up, I mean, you had some questions about na- national merit, we, that, that's a tough one to track as far as. Going back and, cause those aren't even marked in Power School, we'd have to go actually back on social media and backtrack five to six, seven, eight years. To see that kind of connection, maybe secondary could talk a little more about it, but, but we see, what, what, what I kinda point to is what is our geometry number at? Cause in theory, a tag student, the one class that they would come through if they advanced a year, is they would take eighth grade geometry. And those numbers would indicate maybe that are, we, we do see a dip, right, I think our geometry numbers. Let's speak too far off what the actual date is here, but I'd say our geometry at West and East right now are probably low twenties.
Uh, West middle's higher than East is, yeah, because the split isn't fifty-fifty.
It is not, but.
Anyway, that retention, I, I had asked for that, I mean, uh, you know.
Before the five retention is.
But I think it's important to like, you know, uh, when we select, when the district selects rising fourth graders for this program. You know, how good of a predictor are those COGAT source for success and one metric would be, well, do, do, it's like matriculation, you know. Do they graduate from the type program and so if it's between ninety-five and a hundred percent, I think that's just good for the board to know that this program is.
We don't have a lot of kids dropping out between fourth and fifth grade.
Yeah.
And some data just to show that, so this is at three years of NWA where we see vast majority, um. High, high average, um, same thing with ELA, a little bit different. We still have a vast majority in high and high average, you know, proficiency for M step as far as math in ELA mirrors that. It's a ninety-six last year and then a ninety-nine in ELA last year.
Yeah, and that two percent would probably be one kid, right, and four percent two kids. So very, very small numbers and that's just on the ELA side, yeah. No, I'm really glad that we got this data, it's very telling.
And then just off, and then historical also to kinda look at that, that east-west as far as, uh, students who tested. So I just, you know, added them up after we went through every school, just to give you an idea of our split, the idea of splitting east and west. Um, and what that could look like, central grade's a tricky one, right, because central grade is in theory an east-side school. Um, but they can see west middle, so we have a ton of kids open enroll, uh, in general, right? West is, west is a bigger building, west is about three hundred kids, bigger than east, they actually hold the same amount, right, they're both built for about fifteen hundred. Um, but a lot of those kids are obviously right there on the line or downtown and then we actually see a little bit of influx, I think, back to central. Because again, it's, that's closer to them as far as schools go, so.
But we've limited that down the last two years.
A ton, you know, so that'll, you know.
So what you're saying is, oh, sorry, in that definition of west, you're not counting what grade school or elementary school they went to at the time they took.
I split up, what I did is, cause generally what we see from central grade just from a middle school is when we see those, we. That's one of those schools that we have pretty intently as far as enrollment goes, um, especially with tag, cause we start to build out our seventh grade section. And then we have to mix them in with other seventh graders, is that we try to figure out how many are going to east and how many are going to west. And usually it's right around a sixty, forty, so when I did these numbers, I took to central grade and just bumped it sixty, forty to kinda see where they're coming from. It's general, the trend that we see sixty percent of those go to west and forty percent head to east.
I just looked up your geometry numbers, you have forty-two at west middle school and twenty-one at east middle school, so it's almost spot on.
Yeah.
Okay, and then what about Monasori, how did they get counted, west or east side?
I split them.
Okay, fifty-fifty and Blair as well.
Blair, I also split six and six, yeah.
Okay.
Blair actually is, I could've probably done an eight and four, cause generally there are more, it's, it's more east side kids at Blair actually than. I see more.
Okay.
From the east side, interesting.
So it, I mean, obviously that breakdown here, it makes it look like, you know, a west side kid is more likely to test for. Tag than, than the east side and.
Well, not necessarily, because if you look at the numbers, especially of Eastern Elementary, they had a lot of kids tested and qualifying, not go.
Right, that's, this is tested, not, not attending, right here, this is testing, just testing.
And I think again, it could be, it, it's gonna be interesting when we split to see if these numbers hold. I think it's gonna actually, it might move back to a more of a fifty-fifty, cause the idea of location.
Right.
With the central grade and the west side with west middle, is, that's a family flow, right, that's a flow that's happened historically over years. Is how they, they move through the opener moment.
It kinda brings us back to one of Diane Arnold's points though, and that is. Whether you wanna have more sessions of tag spread throughout the district. So, you know, we're going, we're doubling it right now, if you go eastern.
No, you're not, no, you're one, one, two of them.
Exactly, but you're doubling.
Number of sections.
Yeah, but I'm talking geographically, you're going from one location.
To two locations, correct.
That's, I'm sorry.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
I know, I'm hard to follow.
You're right.
And then, you know, do we have enough possibility? To maybe even split it before in time for schools.
You know, and that's something that could, like, we've talked about that possibility future down the road. And if you had one that you did centrally located back at central grade, there, there will be room for one class, you know, like, you know, from that element, like, you know, that.
You don't have enough to fill a classroom.
No, but you know, it, it, history has told us no, but. We'll see when this happens and if that happens, it's a conversation that the, the administration board will just have to take. You know, but there's no indication that tells us that, that there's enough demand for that, but if there is, then you'll, 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 you'll look at that.
Or str- or we could structurally adjust the elementary to fit students' needs, right, there are other options to fit a student's academic needs.
We're actually talking about that right now, is there some ways, so, um, I informed the board in my update. That, um, we had Kate, uh, had the chance to go with us from Long Lake to a, a competency based and. There was some interesting conversation about a couple of schools there that are running some split multi-age, kinda like Monasori does. But allowing kids to maybe move at their own pace and maybe is there a way to advance in math, especially with that? So I think that there's some, some things we wanna look at, also just innovation wise to see if part of our goals of raising our metrics. To raise that bar and, and is there ways, you know, to do that that are even innovative yet, that's in one yet model. And, and could we do that and like, we were excited about, along like could be a great candidate for maybe something like that, that, that allows us something like that. We'll see.
And when you look at Willow Hill again, you know, with twenty students, you only have to take, what? Six more kids from the outside and you could fill it right there.
Of the students that tested, yeah.
And, and Willow Hill, you know, our biggest struggles, we're very much size-wise locked and we're landlocked. You know, so like, like there's, you know, that's a hard spot with that building, so.
Well, like Traverse Heights is kinda.
Well, at least we had some room to expand it, we don't even have like, you know, you're.
Well, you've expanded.
You would have to add a whole lot of dirt to a hi- a hill or cut one down or, you know, there's, there's some logistic challenges there.
Well, for what it's worth, I just have to say, this, the district might be looking at this because it's forced to right now with central grade school. But for what it's worth, this is a dream come true for me, this is something I have advocated for, for five years. That we do have a west side and an east side location, cause I, I just know firsthand how many families really. They struggle with transportation, you know, they just can't make it work with their work schedules, they've, they've just given up that opportunity for their kids. Who got into tag to drive to central grade every day, um, you know. Other families might like physically have to sell their house and move into such a great district just to give that opportunity to their kids. Um, and that's kind of drastic, so I just think this is going to not just preserve, but potentially grow. And, and it, you know, the data tells a great story right now and in the future, that will be the proof in the pudding. But I think it's gonna be really exciting to see what can happen here.
I just, I just wanna stress, agreed, um, it's still not quite maybe what everybody'd want with transportation wise, you know, it. You do have to get into a bus stop of, you know, those two buildings to be able to do it, again. Find a way to find more bus drivers in the future, you know, there's a, there's a, a, an ability to have a conversation on something that's more shuttle-wise. But it, it does at least give you at least one more b- busing area, you know, to be able to drop off into to consider.
Yeah, absolutely.
The other thing is, you know, we have a tier system for helping kids that are having a hard time struggling. Do we have an ability, and this is just conceptual, no answer, I don't think. We're answering definitively anything related to this today. But can we add. But can we add another tier for the students that are actually needing to move faster? Otherwise, you're going to lose some to boredom and.
Yep, and that's, that was our conversation, the, the counter, the meeting we went to was exactly that. Like, how can we move kids at their, their speed? For some kids need, need more time, some kids need less time.
And it can vary over the course of the year.
Yeah, and, 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 and so, you know, our structures, the way they're billed of third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. Is a little bit anti that personalization. And so, you know, the question is, is can we, there, there are districts around the country that are, are innovating some models. That allow less rigidity between grades, levels. And it's just a group of kids together, multi-age that can move at that pace. And so, that's what we're interested in piloting, whether something like that could look like. You know, especially when we have splits, can we use splits maybe to our advantage in that way? You know, with some teachers and aides working and have kids not have artificial barriers necessarily of. You know, I'm, I may be a third grader, but reading at a fourth grade level, but my math is still at a third grade level. How can we group and re-strategize that? And so, that was exactly the, the cohort of this group, the innovation we're a part of, called the Future Learning Council. And we're gonna continue to look at, are there ways to maybe create that middle between our traditional, our legacy? Tag, is there somewhere in the middle here? And we think there might be, so we're gonna look at it.
I've, I've been thinking about that and when you think about the old one-room school thing, I mean, that ultimately.
It was a multi-age, right?
And kids that were very capable, a lot of times were sub-instructing the other kids. I mean, it, it just moved all over and it created a different kind of community. An educational.
So we're gonna take a look at that.
Yeah. All right, Dan or Jesse, was there anything more you wanted to add there, okay, in terms of data? I, I will share with you all, I did crunch some numbers about the National Merit Scholars this year, but I don't have prior years, obviously. But I can share that of the four semifinalists this year, one was in tag. Of the seventeen commended, eight were in tag. So that averages out nine out of twenty-one kids total, forty-three percent were in tag, just this year. So I, you know, that's just, if we were, if we had any kind of like longitudinal data, like. Their eighth and eleventh grade SAT scores, PSAT scores, you know, it would just kind of show what that long-term investment might yield. Um, and I don't love having just one year's worth of data, but I thought that was worth sharing. Only forty-three percent? Forty-three percent of the seventeen National Merit Scholars, yeah, so just. Less than half were tag students, but tag students are less than ten percent of the whole district, so.
Okay, M step.
Okay, uh, little overview, just about the assessment. Nothing here I think that I need to read for you, I think most of you guys, um, are pretty seasoned with the M step. But, um, thought I would include that on here so you have an idea about what the test looks like. Any questions about any of these details here? A little chart here to let you know again and the public what grade levels are assessed. I think it's pretty clear on the red and the green there, um, this is a once a year test that's done in the spring for all of our students.
I love the chart.
There you go, I can make really clear charts, you guys, I'm gonna add that to my resume. Does have a little holiday flair to it, okay. Um, this, I, I'm, I'm a big fan of, of, I agree with you, Josie, trends of data, right? Not looking at one year, so this is some trends for you on, um, four years worth of data. It's got five grade levels across the bottom, there's a lot here. Um, but you can kind of see the proficiency rates in reading over time, different cohorts of kids. And then that red dot stick signifies where the state average was that year. Again, I think one of the biggest things that, you know, Dan and I wanted the board and the public to know, you know, are we happy when we see a number like? Fifty percent of our kids are proficient at reading, nobody is happy, that's, nobody wants that. Uh, we are well above the state average and the region average, um, as well. And, and I, I would say that M step is an interesting score, a test, I, as a classroom teacher of twelve years, if I had a test that kids. Got fifty percent on all the time, I probably would adjust my test, but that's just me as a classroom teacher, you know.
No, I one hundred percent agree with you on that, having been a classroom teacher.
So.
And something that the curriculum team has discussed, Brittany and I, Jesse, is, uh, um, the forty-nine percent at third grade, right? We saw an eight percent drop, other grades maintained or grew, so we've been kind of racking our brains to figure out what exactly. Obviously with teaching and, and testing with thousands of variables, one thing we did look at is the state as a whole drop for third grade. We did look at the cohort also, cause their math also dropped. So if we were to see like, for instance, an eight percent drop in reading, their math goes up and their, or the state would go up. That would mean probably it's not a cohort issue, but we think that there is a relationship here with cohort. And we think, you know, Brittany and I talked about what they received, one, uh, grades one and two and how they really went down to some. Uh, we focus more on foundational reading skills and how that could have impacted them as third graders. We had some feedback from principals, cause what they do is they get data back from M step, um, kinda on the multiple choice of comprehension items first. And then on the backend of it, they get the writing and they thought their scores were higher before that writing came in, so. And we, we've also heard feedback from CKLA that the rigor level right now with writing is far beyond what we've seen in the past. So hopefully that starts to address that and, and plug that hole.
And we're able to differentiate it from AI.
For third grade, right now, for elementary, we're okay, but we're one step ahead of them, so.
Did you wanna say anything about this? I know you had some notes.
Yeah, so I just think, just, you know, we did some really deep dives into other data sets we had too. And I think for third grade, it's really important to note that people call it the pivot year for a reason, right? Because you're really like taking that opportunity of kindergarten through second grade, where you're really focusing on building those foundational skills. Um, and they're really having to be really automatic and incredibly accurate as they make really that complex shift. To really like knowledge, like really complex knowledge, um, text. Um, specifically on a summative test like M step. And so, if students aren't really flu- uh, fluent in their word recognition skills. That's going to dramatically impact their ability to access the complex texts to which they see on state tests such as M step. Um, and so I pulled some AMESWAP plus data for that third grade cohort in particular. Um, becau- and we'll get into M set, or get into AMESWAP plus, I think, in, um, some subsequent sessions. But really, we wanna see that oral reading fluency for those students, be at the fiftieth percentile or higher. Um, particularly the seventy-fifth, where the kid, where students can actually make that shift into focusing on making meaning from what they read. And that particular cohort of students had twenty-eight percent below the twenty-fifth percentile in the spring. So a huge chunk of students who are still not automatic and potentially not accurate when they are reading grade level texts. Um, in comparison to the norm across the nation. So just some, some other correlation with that particular group of students, which may have contributed. Are one of the variables that contributed to that decline or that decrease.
And I will add on seventh grade, right, that's the kind of trend we like seeing. When I pulled apart and was looking at this east middle school, west middle school, Montessori's so small, they don't have the numbers to impact. It really was a gain at west middle school, we've seen his, east middle school scores be pretty consistent. But these last few years, west middle school scores have definitely had a positive trend in that direction, especially for reading. So that's kind of how they're overall trended that way.
So I heard you all attribute, you know, some success to curriculum, what else, I mean, new teachers, professional learning? Are there, uh, instructional coaches, behavioral coaches, other, you know, inputs that?
Yeah, I think the instructional coaches, so we've changed again, and some of it was based on some, some at-risk funding that, um. Budget that we lost, where we talked, we've talked about the free and reduced. But as far as structure goes, it may have helped us focus instructional coaching on instruction. Um, most of our schools, if not all, have a halftime instead of a full-time. And we noticed like when instructional coaching started at the district, there was quite a continued, there was a lot of behavior that was included into that. Even to the point of, you know, response to behavior, not necessarily even coaching the classroom, but part of behavior response teams. And now that we've moved a hundred percent, Brittany's done a fantastic job of working with coaches, she meets with them on a regular cadence. That they are a hundred percent now doing coaching cycles that are teaching and learning within the classroom. So that's kind of where, where we shifted. Again, with all the variables to pinpoint everything, we, we wanna see, and Jesse and I talk about strategic plan and that idea of upward trend. That's where we can, I think, harness all these variables and see an impact, instead of just saying this does it or this does it. You know, coaching, curriculum, professional learning, organization in the district, efficiencies, communication. These are all the things we're trying to work on and hopefully those variables together, we see that upward trend.
Wanted to give one nod here to, to examining that subgroup, part of this was a test for myself to see if I could pretty efficiently pull the data. Yes, I could, that was good, just so we know, cause that's, that's a subgroup. One of the things is, can we pull the data, do we have the reports built, we work with Sophie on that to make sure that we can monitor things, right? Um, so this is just last year's data, right? And I pulled it apart with your economically disadvantaged and your not economically disadvantaged. And then I pulled apart the state in the same exact way. One thing, just to give a, just to give some overview for reading, the state difference between those two groups is about thirty percent. Across all of those grade levels, again, one year of data here, our difference was about twenty-five percent. So although our gap exists, it's larger than, you know, the board had liked, that Dan and I would like, that I think I know our principals would like. It is less than the gap at the state. One thing that's interesting though to notice is that our kids who are not economically disadvantaged, outperformed the state about seven percent last year. Um, but our non, I'm sorry, our economically disadvantaged students outperformed the states economically disadvantaged by about twelve percent. So actually, our kids who are, um, in that group, that sub-population are not only outperforming the state, but outperforming the state more. Than our not economically disadvantaged kids are outperforming the not economically disadvantaged kids at the state level.
Which was an, an interesting, in the third grade, when, when we looked into those numbers more deeply, that, that percentage drop we saw. The majority of that percentage drop was in the not economically disadvantaged. Our economically disadvantaged from, from the previous, from two years ago to last year's was pretty much, uh, on level. It's our not economically disadvantaged that we saw that, that about a five to six percent drop. Just an interesting point that we throw in to kind of, our, our thoughts in another variable, why would that happen and how can we support?
Here's our math, uh, data, I will tell you just, um, from an angle of math, we've, we've, have continued to look at fourth grade. We know that there are some standards gaps there, you see that's the closest, again, outperforming the state all the years across the board. But you see that fourth grade is like that closest, um, and that, that's really that year that they should be. They learn the multiplication in third grade, that's the next skill they pick up there in the fall. Um, and by fourth grade now, they're doing it across fractions, across, um, double digits. They're, um, expected now to start working on the opposite of multiplication, which is division, which is, just, it's a tough concept for kids, so.
It's a, it's work with fluency, I know that Erin Sorensen is our content leader for math. And last year she started additional programming just around fluency, as Jesse has mentioned, moving into fourth grade, long division, fractions. Not having that fluency just obviously stalls out, so we did see a slight uptick, you know, that two percent we're gonna celebrate. But then again, we're looking for upward trend.
Just curious on both math and reading, how did twenty twenty-one look? And I think about that because we were still in COVID, but there was testing. So was that, you know, like similar to the twenty twenty-two, two year?
It was pretty similar, to be honest, I, um, felt like the fifth year made it really crowded. So we, we did one with four years of the data for this, so.
That's fine, I just wondered if it was significantly different.
Was not. Um, also had the subgroup population here in mathematics, just to note again, state difference across all four, five grade levels was about thirty-one percent. We were about twenty-five percent, so again, our gap is less. Again, our not economically disadvantaged only outperformed about two percent or right at, as you see in some of those areas. Um, as opposed to our economically disadvantaged students who outperformed the state at closer to eight percent. That's an average across those five, you see like fourth grade, you're right at where the state was performing there. And then we move on to social studies, which is only assessed in three of our grade levels. Um, so you can see those again, how our students performed and then the state average there. I will tell you, go ahead.
Is that partly curriculum?
Yes, for sure, for sure. And then I would also say eleventh grade is a really, you look at our, if you look at our SAT, like, you know. Which is math and reading, writing, which does include non-fictional tests, does include some, um, social studies concepts and ideas. And, um, readings and writing from that, I would say, content area and genre. Um, as opposed to M step, our kids, uh, it's very hard to motivate a junior who the M step means absolutely nothing to. Besides, I have to get this done as part of my requirement, they use the scores for nothing as far as college entry. They're not reported on anything, um, I was actually sort of surprised that we were close to where the state average was. Um, but yeah, that's a tough one, just to motivate kids to make meaning in that. Same with the science.
And it shouldn't be because it, right now, there is so much that people are reacting to. And what they're reacting to is built follow, uh, this general area. Which means somehow there's not some good communication with discussion that's going on. And that, um, is something I hope it will be. Same with science.
Yeah, I would just say, I, yeah, I, I don't know if these data points are the best to assess our instruction, our curriculum in these two disciplines. I would look more towards how are we doing in our AP courses? How are we doing in reading and writing across all of our areas? How are kids making sense of things, just like you were talking about, how are they understanding one historical situation and, um. Event and how it might link to another one, right? And, and how do they use evidence and text to cite sources, those types of things? I don't necessarily know if M step is the best assessment as to how we're doing in those two areas, but it's one.
Yeah, and then, I mean, I think you've, you've hinted at this, just, we talked about it last month and months prior. About all the testing for the fifth, eighth and eleventh graders in particular. And I guess fifth and eighth, because they're taking four subjects in, in M step, plus a lot of NWEA. And by, and they take the science and the social studies last, right? It's always last, and I have definitely heard kids tell me, not just my own, but like birthday parties, whatever interactions. Like, you know, they're, they're just done and they're like, they just hit option, multiple choice option number A repeatedly. And then they're done in half an hour and the kid who's like actually trying to take the test is like, wait, how is everybody done? And, you know, somehow they're also getting the message, like, it doesn't really matter, so. I mean, that is, I think, something in terms of messaging from our teachers, like, to impart that, hey, just still give it your best shot. So that we don't look like, you know, we aren't doing a great job with social studies and science.
Statistically, they should mark C.
Dan, I'm not supposed to say that. And I don't think it's.
Exactly what stance class did you find that, oh yeah, I just, for the record here.
Um, lots, lots of great stuff to celebrate here, um, and so Dan and I flipped through some of these for you.
Yeah, central, we are highlighting our English language learning program, um, this is Kathleen Schneider at, uh, Central Grade School. Doing some instruction with our English language learners.
And then this is a shot from Ms. Taplin's math class over at West Middle School, really working on engaging. Um, our students, especially during a topic that's mathematics, not necessarily intuitively to be engaged in, so.
Willow Hill, we have some, uh, math in action and CKLA. Uh, third graders played long vowel baseball as part of the TCAP's new CKLA curriculum.
Long vowel baseball.
Did somebody strike out?
Uh, we are, we are really proud this year, we have four TCAP semifinalists. Um, these students are now in the competition, um, to see if they can move on to become finalists. They submit essays, uh, portfolio, uh, their transcript, their counselors do some work. So four of those students there in two different pictures with, that's Ben Berger, he's not a National Merit semifinalist.
But he does have almost the exact same poaching.
Burger's face always looks like he's those roller coaster pics.
Um, and then at Central High. Um, and then at Central High School, we had five commended scholars. So these are students who scored in the top three percent nationally, not quite that top one or half a percent to be a semi, but just an incredible feat for these five students here. And then Wes just had a banner day. I mean, man, they had twelve students who earned that commended scholar. Yeah, what a strong class they have over there. So some familiar faces there, I think, so.
Both schools. And again, half of these kids were in tag, the West, and two of the five at Central High for the commended.
Huge honors for those kids, congratulations.
And we did, I mentioned fluency that Erin Sorensen was working on was math. And this is the exact fluency kits that they're working with here at Cortate to help drill into that and kind of expand a little bit on our curriculum.
Uh, here we have some East Middle School students working on kind of Halloween candy being endangered or orangutans. I don't know what they found out on their conclusions, but that's pretty interesting.
Based on this, I'm gonna be giving up potato chips instead of candy, I'm concerned.
Perhaps the candy, you might be.
Maybe they don't get enough of it, that's what's the problem.
Uh, Books From Birth contacted me, they're working with AM Rotary, they work with, um, Dolly Parton Imagination Library, giving books to students at Monson, you know, right in the delivery room and then not in the delivery room, but.
Close, close.
Yeah.
Who's gonna give you this novel?
Poor time, poor time, it's something I would do.
That and the Bradley method, just get their mind off of it, right?
We'll take the baby down.
Next slide, next slide.
Give your books first and.
Anyway, they did come in and talk to our elementary principals and our organizing volunteers in every school in the, in the classroom. So it's nice to make that connection. Sunrise Rotary, to our elementary principals to be able to make this happen in buildings.
And I think they were at the full board and did a public comment too, yes. Just such a really cool program on part of Sunrise Rotary, and so I see them talk a lot about this. And, um, just a great option for all of our families in this region to get those books in their kids' hands.
And I would say they've been a proponent to help support, uh, when kids are about to turn three and have their very first IEP, I bring a book to their home every time when I visit them and welcome to the TCAP's family, so. They've been a huge proponent of them.
Couple little just fun videos we threw in here. This is Central High Schools, we're just coming off of our two homecoming weeks, so it's a little snapshot of, you know, this is that idea of building community service, right? Our community feel, community culture in your school, and how do you make kids feel like they belong and have a place? Having these types of events does, does matter and plays into that. So little video here from Central. And then on the next slide here, we've got Wes's video here too, from just some fun activities for students to enjoy their school community, so. And then next up for our high schools, they're gonna be gearing up for Patriot Game. That is the, that week is sort of that week of October twentieth. I know we've done, um, a little bit of a communication about saving the date on that, but there'll be more information you'll see coming out about that. And we've worked really hard, you know, our student senate at both schools worked together to choose who will be receiving the funds. That'll be coming out hopefully this week. I know they're meeting together, really to celebrate our community and to make it a Traverse City event, as much as even though there's a score at the end of the night, but really, how do we have fun together, so.
Constitution Day around our different elementary schools, September seventeenth, so specifically on this day, part of a state requirement, but regardless, uh, students learn different items around the Constitution and, uh, and history.
Awesome.
Next one, we had our Detroit Red Wings camp at Traverse Heights. So they come in, uh, every kid, I believe, gets a T-shirt. And then they go through some drills with some Detroit Red Wing players. So great opportunities for those kids to, to kind of meet some of those people and, and get some physical activity.
Another highlight here of our ESL class, so this would be Amanda's counterpart across town. Just getting these kids out, exposing them to different things. They've got a great, you know, access to the Botanical Gardens across the street there, so. Oh, sorry, Dan.
I think there was one more back one.
And Long Lake introduced their house system, that was last Friday. Um, I was part of that assembly, as far as they got their, their wheel there as assigning points and, uh, this is it right here. Thanks for including this, this is wonderful.
Sorry, the volume's not.
Dan's getting assigned to a house.
Watch, watch his wheel, how it, this reminds me of, uh, Price is Right.
Didn't quite make it into the other.
Just a flexism here, right here.
How sorry you are.
Light keepers, yeah, the old light keepers. Get a T-shirt.
Didn't wear it today.
I did not, no, well, it's polo today, so I changed it up.
Well, great, excellent meeting all. I know we went long today, but lots of really good information and discussion. And we appreciate all the data you pulled together for us. And with that, I know there was some giddyness at the end. Approached the two-hour mark. Our next board curriculum committee meeting will be Tuesday, October twenty-eighth at eight-thirty a.m. here at Glen Loomis Building. And with that, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.